I'm sorry, what?
Is that flimsy?
What was the only thing they put on the picture? Makeup!
Yeah.
Fifty dollars. Fifty dollars.
Then we know where we're at. We put a string beginning and ending. Now we're speed up.
Oh, speed up, yeah. We'd be losing it. We'd be losing it.
On your end. On your end.
So, sit down if you'd like.
Mike gets a lot of help.
But you could dream of staying on the table.
It's predictable.
This is one of the special suits, right? Silk, Kevin. It's a mix. So... Try to find the sugar.
Did he say?
Yeah, he said, "I don't have a lot of water." He said, "Well, that's good, right?" He said, "We do have all the pointers that you have the water station," "that you want to review on the..." I was like, "So is that a good thing?" He said, "Better than your hair there."
You didn't tell me that. We have another one of our partners, Hopper, who has one side of the house.
He asked the question, "But I have this scanner here, can I get the backup for this sewer?" I'm like, "Kill me." So, hey, Paul, this is a thorough review.
Yep. We want to... I'd like to call this meeting to order. State that this meeting is being held in compliance with the provision of the Open Public Beak Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231. It was properly noticed and has been posted and certified by the clerk. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham.
Here.
Mr. Padula.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Here.
Join me for a moment of solid reflection. Join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we're going to dispense of our normal protocol tonight, but we have a special presentation with a sewer rate study done by Lurch, Ventry, and Riggins, LLP, and I'll introduce Paul Lurch, one of the principals, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, ma'am. What I'm prepared to do is to go over the report today that we prepared for the mayor and council. And the report was really designed to help the mayor and council develop, propose new rates if they desire to do so. What we had done is, and this is really phase one of this study, this phase actually took a look at the historical data for the past two years. Historical data being only the sewer utility, the historical data, meaning the historical revenues, historical expenditures. Then what we did is we actually prepared a projection to forecast what the next three years would look like on the revenue side as well as on the expenditure side. In doing that, it's important to note that the historical or the forecasted numbers do not alter the existing rate structure. So, the existing rate structure that the borough is currently utilizing is the exact same structure that we utilized to go forward over the next three years. The PowerPoint that we're going to have, the limited pieces here that we're going to present, is really just an overview, and I didn't really intend on getting into the details of it. I think it's more important to just have a conceptual concept as to what we've done, where we are, and obviously, there is still more work to be done as we move forward. So, if you were to... Joe, do you want to just sit outside? So, this is one of the first things that we did when we were engaged to do... Bless you. That we were engaged to do the agreed-up proceedings report. And really, what this is simply again, this is just giving you, the leader, as well as the mayor and council, understanding when we look at the utility, where have we been? Because I think that's the most important thing before you can figure out where we go. So, historical data is here. Just in summary format, we have all the revenues and expenditures, which are summarized. And I think I just want to point down here that when you look at the bottom number, which is the fund balances, so you can see back in '14, I'll just use round numbers, it was $2.7 million, and it went up to 2018, unaudited, but I don't feel that those numbers are going to change once the audit's completed, and that's at $3.5 million. But again, that just gives you a little bit of perspective as to where we are. So, you run somewhere around a $4.55, $4.8 million to run that utility and to cover those expenses and charges. So, having said that and looked at that historical data, then we had took that information and we analyzed and used those numbers to project where are we going to go for the next three years. And again, I think that when you look at this, we look at the utilization of surplus. So, '17 and '18 is obviously just repeat numbers from the previous exhibits and shows the exact actual data and where we ended the year with the surplus numbers. And then we start getting into the forecasted or projected years, 19, 20, 21. And the rents, you can see, are stable, and the reason that they are stable is because, again, as I said before, the model that we use is the existing model that we have today. And so, what would happen if we did nothing, in essence, in changing any of the rates or the rate structure? What would happen is that over time, and I'll get into some of the details a little bit, but I think if you look at, again, the focus on the fund balance at the very bottom, as I said to you before, we started with that roughly 2.7 in '14, and as we go forward now, that that surplus number is going to start to go down as well, year after year after year. Just wanted to grab something. One second. And really, these forecasted numbers, as I said, I explained to you a little bit about the revenue side of it. Again, no change there as far as the rent and the rate structure. On the expenditure side, we know that the sewer charge is the largest component of the operating expense, you know, and that has been, that's about a million dollars, a little bit over a million dollars a year that we pay to MSA, who are the actual disposal of the sewer charges. That we projected to escalate at roughly 5% a year. The O&amp;E lineup that you're seeing there actually is forecasted to go up at about a blended rate of 4% per year. And that takes into effect that we considered operating expenses, salaries and wages would go up typically 2%. O&amp;E, for the most part, would go up at roughly 2%. We had some other variances in there when we talk about health insurance and pension. Those we escalated a little bit higher, you know, those were being escalated at roughly 7% per year. Utilities at about 5%. You'll see debt service here. Debt service is based upon actual current debt service that we are currently locked into. The Borough of Patcon, its sewer utility alone, has permanently financed all of its authorized debt. Matter of fact, that over the past two years, the mayor and council, through the budget process, wound up funding any of the unfunded projects from the past. So, 2018 and '17, if you look at deferred charges, you can see there's a big fluctuation. We were at $300,000, $307,000, and then $297,000, and it drops off dramatically. Those two years had a big component of paying off some additional projects, again, called deferred charges, unfunded. So, then going forward, that number actually drops off, the capital outlay, and I like to look at these together, honestly, when I look at, when I look at capital outlay as well as the deferred charges. So, you can see the combination of both, really, from seven to eight, was roughly $370,408,000 in combination, and in 2019, that deferred charge drops dramatically. The capital outlay, which is money that's put aside for future capital purposes or capital needs of the utility itself. So, that number in 2019 budget has $500,000. So, when you look at year to year, it was roughly $367,000, $407,000 in '18. '19 has $500,000, and then after that, we've projected or forecasted $300,000 each year. It's important to note that this, again, is nothing more than a forecast. These numbers can and will change. We know that. But we're doing our best to the two, to come up with what we think is a predictable number as to where we think revenues and expenses are going. So, these numbers are indicating to us that the surplus is dropping slightly as we go forward, $3.2 million in 2019, $3.1 million, and then $2.9 million. And as I indicated, this financial report, a financial study, was really to determine a couple of things. One is to determine where were the spendings and the revenues situated? How did we think those were going to forecast out going forward? What was it going to do to surplus? And then I think that becomes the tool for the next process, the next part of the calculation. One of the other pieces of the calculation that we have, that we came across as part of our study, was the analysis of the sewer utility, the current review of the rates, the structure of how the residential components were being charged, and then the other piece, for all intents and purposes, which is really non-residential, and then non-residential would include commercial, apartments, other government entities, other tax-exempt nonprofit agencies. So, we have the two components. And what we did determine is, is that going through the process of analyzing the data, that when we looked at the percentage of water usage, comparing the residential component to the non-residential component, we can see that, okay, so right now, we're, based on historical data, we know that the residential component has about 93% of the water usage because, remember, even though we're talking about sewer, it's really all being determined from water usage because we're not monitoring the sewer flow. What is being metered is the flow that's coming into the residential or the particular units. So, it's always based on water usage going in. So, we know that that, those numbers equate to about that 93 versus 7%. However, when we looked at the actual billing components and how the bills were being derived, we saw that there's about a 2% variance here. So, obviously, you can see that the residents had about a 93% usage of the water, but yet they were paying roughly 95% of the bill. So, I think this was something that, obviously, that I believe we're going to look forward to, we're going to look at for the next phase of the study, but this is certainly information that we're going to take and go forward with. Sure.
Question on that rate, the non-residential versus residential. Is that taken into consideration if anybody does not look at any entity that does not have the sewers?
Can you explain the question?
Yeah, I have city water, but I don't have city sewers. And is that rate being built into that? Is that part of that rate?
You don't have city sewers, you're not part of the rate structure. You're not getting that. That's correct.
Right. Okay. That was the question.
Being that you mentioned that this has a lot to do with water usage and so on and so forth, how does this impact residents that pay for water as well as the sewer?
Right. So, you have some residents that actually aren't on water, have wells. Right. So, the only thing that we were able to do is, is that we had to extrapolate the data. So, what we did is we actually had, and I think it's about 50% or so, the data will show, that we know that there's roughly 50% of the residential units actually have water usage that was metered. So, we extrapolated that to the other 50% and said, "Well, if the average residential unit is metering X number of gallons well or of water, then that's what we're going to extrapolate going forward for the remaining residential units." And that's how we came up with the total water usage compared to the non-residential water usage.
What was the average for the residential usage?
Water-wise? Gallonage-wise? I don't think that anything like that.
You know, I don't know, I don't have that information here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't really matter at this point, honestly.
It would.
How?
It actually would.
Because what's...
We're overestimating the amount of gallonage for what we're being billed for and how it's broken down.
No, we're not.
We are.
It's a set fee. You have a hole in the street.
No, no, I'm talking about the actual gallonage. It's 72,000 gallons a year that they're estimating for us, and the average is about $10,500, $40,000 a year.
Yeah, you also have the people too that will use their drainage when their basement floods and dump it into the sewer also, so I think it's all offset.
Right. It's not. But that's...
Well, we're working with the existing ordinance, and the existing ordinance has an EDU attached to it, and each residential unit is an EDU, and that's how it's being billed. So, it's currently being billed at $322 for EDU. So, it's basically...
Fifty cents.
Yeah, 50 cents, right.
I think I completely understood your answer to my question. How does that affect people who are paying for water as well as sewer? And I, as a single resident that has one bathroom, I do not even use the amount of water that I'm being charged for because there is a minimum charge. So, I'm getting hit with that on top of the fact that my sewer usage is almost nil, not existed.
You know, and, you know, I can understand where you're coming from, but the way the ordinance is structured, every residential unit is treated the same.
That's...
So, you have to...
That sounds a little off, doesn't it?
It's the way it's structured.
Does it sound off, though?
I don't know that it's off.
Can I say something? When I moved into town here in 2006, I looked into the sewer and everything like that. As everybody here is well aware, I'm the person that started the sewer petition back in 2008, and even the attorney told me that you can't charge somebody because I said to the town, I'm like, "Hey, we all voted this is a town." It was supposed to be five phases. It's not my fault that they went bankrupt. It's not my fault that there were two different contractors, the same order was, whatever the case was. The end of the day is, we all voted it is a town. But the attorney also had, you cannot make somebody pay for a service they don't receive. And then if you wanted to keep going round and round about this, you know, then I said, my argument was when I was here in 2008, I'm like, "Well, I don't have kids, why am I paying school tax? That's 60% of my taxes." But at the end of the day is, when the town votes on something, they all have to stick by it, and it is what it is. Anybody that moves into the town, they should do their homework before they move into the town.
Okay, sir, just to add on to that, I purchased my home in 2004.
That's great.
At that time, the sewer was not even any kind of an issue.
Exactly.
All right? I was forced to connect a year afterwards, which I had not accounted into my budget as far as purchasing the home. Additionally, I also did some research, and I had spoken to the town about this sewer project, and I was quoted a number of $8,000, which I am not making up, that they said, "If you pay this $8,000 upfront, then you have covered the fee for the usage of the sewer," and that's something that I was told. Nobody knows what I'm talking about now.
No, I understand what you're talking about. But I'm... In the same vicinity.
I very specifically asked that, and I was given a specific number. They said, "If you paid $8,000, you're done. You've paid for your portion of it, and you're clear." Well, I paid a lot more than $8,000.
We all had.
I know.
At the end of the day is...
Let's give someone else a chance.
And I have sewer in my street. I'm paying for my sewer, and I'm still using my septic, but the sewer is available there for me, so if I decide to do in addition, go up a level and make it a three-bedroom house, I'm able to do that now, where I wasn't able to do that before.
Are you paying for sewer?
Yes.
Why?
Are you hooked up to sewer?
Because it's in the street, and it's a service that can be provided for. That's right there. I decided not to hook up to it.
No, 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 no.
But it's still right there in the street.
No, we were forced to.
Let's... That was an initial thing.
That's not now. It's not.
Let's not debate. Next question.
Yes, I've been in town for about 40 years, and part of it is, is that when we first moved here, sewers were supposed to be on the board and going to be in within six months. The town, the elders of this town voted it down over and over and over again. They voted down a swimming pool over at the high school, which would have been a revenue-making machine right now because the closest one is Picatinny, I mean, all the way up in Quanik, and the next one is Maristown. So, we would have had a money-making item in the town. And the town is very negative about things, the people of the town, what you're seeing on the web and other places. And I think part of the big gray elephant that's sitting in the corner is, some of the peoples in this room think that you and the mayor are crooked. That's the, that's the gist of what's going on. You're not reporting to us, you're not giving us the information, you're hiding stuff, you don't give reports on time, and I don't think everybody realizes that in any other town, you're paying the same fees, there is no exemptions. And I don't know if anybody else has people that live in other towns, but I contacted them and asked them about that before putting down a PATCON. My big thing is, this is a very well-run town, I'm proud of living here. I haven't moved out of the town for that reason. I'm proud to live here. And I think people need to take that attitude and come forward, and the town also has to release more information. And I know, Mayor Francis, you're a big person with that, and dealing with you before, you were fantastic with me, and I think that that's what's needed, the interaction between people, not where is an adversarial position that we're taking. And I think that that would alleviate a lot of the bulletin boards and everything else.
That's why we're here tonight.
Right. But I heard a comment that, "What's those numbers? What do they mean? That means nothing to us." So, maybe a breakdown in, I don't know how else to explain it, but a bigger breakdown of how and why we've come up with these numbers, break it down even further than you had.
Well, I'm hoping that this, our professionals can translate it to English, if you will.
Yeah.
And so, my expectation is that to translate these numbers, to see what they really mean. That's what we, that's why we're here, that's what we're paying them for. So, if someone wants to know what a number means, we that.
Can we, can we get a workshop, maybe, where we go over the numbers with a member of the town or...
Do it now. These are guys we pay to do this.
Let people knock themselves out? Let them hear the answers.
Absolutely. And if you write questions down, I promise that I'll look at the technical answers for them because I certainly not smart enough to give you the technical answer.
What happens for $8,000 number that I was told?
I have no clue.
The number floating around is $20,000, is that it?
There was all kinds of stuff that floats around, usually it floats around for some time.
John, what is the EDUs? There used to be 75 EDUs a house. Where do you get the use now?
The, as you know, Jimmy, when you apply for a treatment works approval permit with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and that's how this all started, is applying for a TWA permit to get approval to construct a sewer system. And with the DEP regulations, they have very specific in their regulations regarding the projected flow you should apply for all uses, either residential, commercial, whatever the case may be, and you make flow projections, and based on the flow projections, and then you commit to that capacity. When HAPACON applied for the TWA permit, the EDU allocation per DEP, I believe it was 250 gallons a day, was their requirement. And the borough did petition that, identifying water records. It wasn't as low as 120 gallons a day for revenue. It was higher, but they were able to petition the DEP to accept 200 gallons a day. So, they accepted 200 gallons a day. So, the residential projection was based on 200 gallons a day. And that, with the DEP projections, they're always conservative because it's a long-term design criteria because we, right now, have a very new system, there's little infiltration, inflow and infiltration, that basically groundwater getting into the pipes or surface water getting into the pipes, and that's just the nature of operating a sewer system. You cannot eliminate all of that. And as the system gets older, you have a challenge of controlling that. So, the amount of sewer capacity that we have is set by that TWA permit, which is 580,000 gallons a day. And so, when we're looking at the EDU, at this point, everyone's connected, and what's very common with the DEP criteria they have, it's very conservative, and you always, the actuals always tend to go less than what the projections are because you have that reserve for II, the reserve to make sure, DEP basically does not want you to go over. It used to be 80% was your capacity assurance. They don't want you to go 80% of your allocation, so the projections were always to keep you below 80 because you do get fluctuations. They recently increased that to 90, so that's where we are with 90.
Okay.
Can I ask some questions?
These loans are 20-year loans. I'm looking at the debt service. Why is the price not going down?
That debt service was structured for a level payment. And we actually have bond counsel here too, if you want to chime in as well. But the existing debt service was structured for a level payment in order to avoid a spike in the system. And I think that from an historical perspective, the trust, which is the latest financing, we had most of the, most of the infrastructure debt was in notes at that point in time, and then we went to the trust. The trust allowed us then to refinance those notes that were outstanding, and they generally let you do that over a 20-year period. So, that total debt then was distributed at over a 30-year period.
Excuse me. Can we interrupt you? I just want to take a step back. Sure. When we got these loans, they were 20-year loans, and when you go and say you refinance them, why did you refinance?
We didn't refinance the loan. What we did is we took the temporary notes, bond anticipation notes that were being issued year after year after year, and once you get to the 10th year, you have to permanently pay them off or finance them. And at that point was when the trust was involved. John, give me a minute on that.
No, Jimmy, actually, the entire project was not funded through the trust. There was a portion through the trust, and then a second portion was funded independently. So, that's why they do have, and why, John, why don't you take...
I'm John Cantalupo, bond attorney for the town, Martin Greiner. Yeah, when I came into the town around 2009, 2010, there was a number, an amount of existing debt that you guys had financed, like you said, sir, through 20-year loans through the EIT program. We worked with the EIT in order to try to create level debt service. In other words, almost like a mortgage payment every year where it'd be the same amount. And what...
Moves into the town, they should do their homework before they move into the town.
Okay, sir, just to add on to that, I purchased my home in 2004.
That's great.
At that time, the sewer was not even any kind of an issue.
Exactly.
All right, I was forced to connect a year afterwards, which I had not accounted into my budget as far as purchasing the home. Additionally, I also did some research and I had spoken to the town about this sewer project. And I was quoted a number of $8,000, which I am not making up, that they said if you pay this $8,000 upfront, then you have covered the fee for the usage of the sewer. And that's something that I was told. Nobody knows what I'm talking about now.
No, I understand what you're talking about.
But I...
In the same vicinity.
I very specifically asked that and I was given a specific number. They said if you paid $8,000, you're done. You've paid for your portion of it and you're clear. Well, I paid a lot more than $8,000.
We all had.
I know.
At the end of the day...
Let's give someone else a chance.
And I have sewer in my street. I'm paying for my sewer and I'm still using my septic. But the sewer is available there for me, so if I decide to do in addition, go up a level and make it a three-bedroom house, I'm able to do that now, where I wasn't able to do that before.
Are you paying for sewer?
Yes.
Why?
Are you hooked up to sewer?
Because it's in the street and it's a service that can be provided for. That's right there. I decided not to hook up to it.
No, 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 no.
But it's still right there on the street.
No, we were forced to.
Let's...
That was enough for our...
That's not now. It's not.
Let's not debate. Next question.
Yes, I've been in town for about 40 years and part of it is, is that when we first moved here, sewers were supposed to be on the board and going to be in within six months. The town, the elders of this town voted it down over and over and over again. They voted down a swimming pool over at the high school, which would have been a revenue-making machine right now, because the closest one is Picatinny, I mean, all the way up in Quanik and the next one is Maristown. So we would have had a money-making item in the town. And the town is very negative about things, the people of the town, what you're seeing on the web and other places. And I think part of the big gray elephant that's sitting in the corner is some of the peoples in this room think that you and Mayor are crooked. That's the gist of what's going on. You're not reporting to us, you're not giving us the information, you're hiding stuff, you don't give reports on time. And I don't think everybody realizes that in any other town, you're paying the same fees, there is no exemptions. And I don't know if anybody else has people that live in other towns, but I contacted them and asked them about that before putting down a PATCON. My big thing is, this is a very well-run town. I'm proud of living here. I haven't moved out of the town for that reason. I'm proud to live here. And I think people need to take that attitude and come forward. And the town also has to release more information. And I know Mayor Francis, you're a big person with that and dealing with you before. You were fantastic with me. And I think that that's what's needed, the interaction between people, not where is an adversarially position that we're taking. And I think that that would alleviate a lot of the bulletin boards and everything else.
That's why we're here tonight.
Right, but I heard a comment that, what's those numbers? What do they mean? That means nothing to us. So maybe a breakdown in... I don't know how else to explain it, but a bigger breakdown of how and why we've come up with these numbers, break it down even further than you had.
Well, I'm hoping that this, our professionals can translate it to English, if you will. And so my expectation is that to translate these numbers, to see what they really mean. That's what we... That's why we're here, that's what we're paying them for. So if someone wants to know what a number means, we that.
Can we get a workshop, maybe, where we go over the numbers with a member of the town or...
Do it now. These are guys we pay to do this.
Let people knock themselves out and let them hear the answers.
Absolutely. And as you're writing questions down, I promised that I'll look into the technical answers for them, because I certainly am smart enough to give you the technical answers.
What happens for $8,000 that I was told?
I have no clue.
The number floating around is $20,000, is that it?
There was all kinds of stuff that floats around, usually a $1,200 or $1,500 sometimes.
EDU, how are you? Just a question, how are you? John, what is the EDUs? There used to be 75 EDUs a house. Where do you get the EDUs now?
The... As you know, Jimmy, when you apply for a treatment works approval permit with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and that's how this all started, is applying for a TWA permit to get approval to construct a sewer system. And with the DEP regulations, they have very specific in their regulations regarding the projected flow you should apply for all uses, either residential, commercial, whatever the case may be. And you make flow projections and based on the flow projections, and then you commit to that capacity. When HAPACON applied for the TWA permit, the EDU allocation per DEP, I believe it was 250 gallons a day, was their requirement. And the borough did petition that identifying water records. It wasn't as low as 120 gallons a day for me. It was higher, but they were able to petition the DEP to accept 200 gallons a day. So they accepted 200 gallons a day. So the residential projection was based on 200 gallons a day. And that, with the DEP projections, they're always conservative because it's a long-term design criteria, because we right now have a very new system. There's little infiltration, inflow and infiltration, that basically groundwater getting into the pipes or surface water getting into the pipes. And that's just the nature of operating a sewer system. You cannot eliminate all of that. And as the system gets older, you have a challenge of controlling that. So the amount of sewer capacity that we have is set by that TWA permit, which is 580,000 gallons a day. And so when we're looking at the EDU, at this point, everyone's connected. And what's very common with the DEP criteria that they have, it's very conservative, and you always, the actuals always tend to go less than what the projections are, because you have that reserve for II, the reserve to make sure, DEP basically does not want you to go over. It used to be 80% was your capacity assurance. They don't want you to go 80% of your allocation, so the projections were always to keep you below 80, because you do get fluctuations. They recently increased that to 90, so that's where we are with 90.
Okay. Can I ask some questions? These loans are 20-year loans. I'm looking at the debt service. Why is the price not going down?
That debt service was structured for a level payment. And we actually have bond counsel here too, if you want to chime in as well. But the existing debt service was structured for a level payment in order to avoid a spike in the system. And I think that from an historical perspective, the trust, which is the latest financing, we had most of the infrastructure debt was in notes at that point in time. And then we went to the trust. The trust allowed us then to refinance those notes that were outstanding, and they generally let you do that over a 20-year period. So that total debt then was distributed at over a 30-year period.
Excuse me. Can we interrupt you? I just want to take a step back.
Sure.
When we got these loans, they were 20-year loans. And when you go and say you refinance them, why did you refinance them?
We didn't refinance the loan. What we did is we took the temporary notes, bond anticipation notes that were being issued year after year after year, and once you get to the 10th year, you have to permanently pay them off or finance them. And at that point was when the trust was involved. John, can you...
Jimmy, actually, the entire project was not funded through the trust. There was a portion through the trust and then a second portion was funded independently. So that's why they do have... And why, John, why don't you go ahead?
I'm John Cantalupo, bond attorney for the town, Martin Greiner. Yeah, when I came into the town around 2009, 2010, there was a number, an amount of existing debt that you guys had financed, like you said, sir, through a 20-year loan through the EIT program. We worked with the EIT in order to try to create level debt service. In other words, almost like a mortgage payment every year where it'd be the same amount. And what they allowed us to do, which is highly unusual working with us, was to allow us to roll a note for a larger portion of the program for 10 years and then finance that. And that's when we financed that in 2015. And that allowed us to fill in the backend of the debt service. If they had forced us, like they do most of the time, to finance that immediately, there would have been a tremendous spike in your debt service in those earlier years, say like in 2010, 11, 12. So what this did was allowed us to push that out a little further and then blend it in and pay it off over a period of years, so it's more like a mortgage payment and it's more of a consistent payment. When we refinanced a debt in 2016, the only way you can refinance the outstanding bonds is if you have 3% debt service savings. So at the time, interest rates was much lower, as you know, you're hearing now, interest rates were climbing. We went into the marketplace because there was a debt service savings that we could achieve for the taxpayers and we hit the market at the time to make sure we refinance it. The debt was not put out any further than it was before. It was paid in the same period of time, but it was all done just like when you refinance your mortgage for debt service savings, the same thing we did there to make sure we achieved debt service savings for the taxpayers.
Okay. Let me say it this way. When we borrowed the money, I think it was, what was it, 2000?
2001. There's a series of them, yeah.
Yeah, I was on the council when that went on.
Yes, sorry.
And when we did that, the agreement we had with Dennis Hart, you know Dennis Hart? Okay, well, he's gone now. Dennis Hart made us an agreement that he would help us with the financing, because if anybody here goes back to...
Oh, Dennis Hart from NJEIT, yes. Now, I just, I know Dennis Hart, he had retired, but yeah, I know who Dennis is, yes.
Yes, yes. With the money that we had gotten, the first set of projects was a two-phase project. It was supposed to be a boulevard and, I believe, the schools. I swear it was. We got something like $8 million from Bob Lattell, I think mildly free on ice. We had to come up with $5 million, I think it was, to do this job. Now, I know what happened and I know why we're in this hole. They never were supposed to refinance this money. They were supposed to pay off that section, that $5,000, $5 billion. They were supposed to pay that off before they did anything else. But because some powers to be screwed up the job, they spent the money on a second project that they were supposed to use for the first project. That's why we're in the problem we're in. And John would know this, but I know Kevin Kelly would know it. I know Fletcher would know it, because we were all involved in this. I cannot understand for the life of me why we went further on into debt when there was no reason to. We had an agreement with the state. The reason we had to go forward with the sewers is because the state threatened to come in because of our water health, they would not do a septic management plan. And that's why we had to get the sewers, otherwise the state said they were going to come in and start and get the houses. And that's why we did what we did. I had gotten off the council after that. But I'm looking here, over 20 years later, we're still paying the same debt service, and I'm not blaming you for refinancing. Some people are stupid. School teachers should not be making decisions on construction projects. We have professional engineers that do that. Fletcher was one of them and he's one of the best. The problem is, he did what he was told by the mayor and council. That's why we're in this hole. Same thing, I'm looking here at the operating expense, okay? I'll go along with that. Capital layout, capital outlay. What are we spending it on? We have a fairly new system. Why are we spending... Capital outlays are capital improvement. Why are we spending money on capital improvement, on the new system?
The monies that are sitting in have been previously spent, but what's projected in 19, 20, and 21, as indicated before, is nothing more than a forecast. Those numbers can't change. So right now, the 19 budget does have $500,000 in for current and future projects, but that doesn't mean it can't change. And the 300 projecting going out, you may, the mayor and council may determine that it's not needed.
Well, let me just say...
So that's certainly something that's fluid.
Yeah, I apologize, I shouldn't have told you.
That's okay.
Why would you even think about going forward, looking at your past history? You can't run a system. I'm not saying you can't run it, and I'm not blaming you people. You do not have people, outside maybe one guy I know up there, who has construction experience. We made the decisions on this project with people, we had cops, we had a local furniture salesman, and they were spending billions of dollars on stuff that they didn't know. That's the next thing, okay? Again, you've answered why a debt service is $2,600, $600,000. When can I see that stop?
Yeah, well, the debt service, I can tell you, I can tell you...
It's a tough one.
It's not that tough, it's just, you know, it doesn't really end until 2033.
Is the project completed at that point?
That's a final large impetus. We do have some drop-offs again in 2022, 23, but just like Paul had said, the final payments are in 2033.
So a 20-year loan is stable, this is how I pay bills. A 20-year mortgage, it's going to take you 40 years to pay off, that's what you're telling me.
Well, I think what happened wasn't when we had come into the town, there was a large amount of debt that was going out and the trust let us finance those notes for 10 years in order to soften the blow to ratepayers and keep the debt service at roughly the same level and feather that in. In other words, your debt was going down and you still have this large bullet outstanding you were rolling over year to year. And then they said, okay, well, now we lock that in, we lock it in at low rates in the trust program, which is a 50% market rate, 50% zero-inches, a very good loan program. And then that just created more of like a mortgage payment for you guys as opposed to having larger spikes in a year, because back then, when we had first come to town, there was a big problem, just like there was a problem with how high rates were, and they were trying to make sure that there wasn't additional spikes. So now they're just, that's why the debt service looks like a mortgage payment.
Yeah, well, you know, in reality, to us, that's what it is. Now, to change the subject, why is our operating expense going down?
Operating expense is going up. It's going up. It's up in 2020 and then up in 2021.
Down now. Right now, you're paying $1,708,730. In 2021, you're going to pay $1,606,824.
He's looking at the actuals from 2017 versus the projected.
Actual 2017, 18, 19, 20, 21.
So your operating expense... 2017 under the operating line is actual from 17 and 18 went down to 1.5 lately, and then now it's going to be at the 1.47.
Okay, so what you're saying is that considering buying new vehicles, considering major purchases during the course of the sewer system upgrades, everyday maintenance, but that's not a capital expense?
Well, it's part of the operating and there are some savings with some salary reductions going forward in 19 and 2021, so we're seeing some of that. As I said to you before, really the blended rate is about 4%, but really everything is factored at about 2%. Medical and that's about 7%. And of course, the MSA fee that's buried in that operating, we're projecting 5% a year.
I just want to note that the MSA fee, it's over $1 million, over $1 million.
It is, it is a very substantial cost.
And that stays the same. And that's because right now, our sewer flows are below the minimum allocation, so we're paying that fee regardless if we put one gallon into the sewer system or 300,000, we have to pay that MSA fee.
Yeah, because that was the figure that they gave us to reconstruct.
Reconstruct, correct.
But that fee should go down in 2022.
But see, I just...
It will go down in 2022.
I'm not a smart guy. I just want to ask you. How can this be going down when every year we're looking at a 2% or 3% increase in cost of living?
What's going down?
Like I was talking about the operating expense.
The operating expense is a component of, as I indicated to you, we have a decrease in some of the salaries.
Okay.
Okay, so you have the elimination of the supervisor being charged, so that's where you're seeing some savings on the operating side. Other than that, everything else on the operating side is really going to go up at, as I said to you, about a blended rate of 4%.
Yeah, so we're talking about the one operator that you're not going to have, roughly $80,000 for the year, with his matching his social security and his benefits and all of that? 80 grand? I don't see...
It's about a $50,000 value in that line.
I wanted to give the guy a raise.
It's worth about $50,000 in that line.
Yeah, I just have a hard time. I believe you. I believe you, believe me, and I'm in no position to stand here and question your integrity or credibility. I'm not here to do that. It's just beyond me how we're still paying the same amount of money over 30 years. So are you telling me now in 30, 31, that we will no longer pay any sewer debt?
We're redamned.
I could never make those representations, because of course, you're going to have other issues that are going to come up as the sewer ages again, you're going to have to make improvements to the system, and those large improvements will have to be added in at some point.
I accept that, but we're not talking about major capital improvements that are costing millions of dollars.
I don't know the answer.
What are we spending $500,000 or $500,000 in capital outlay this year on? We're spending an extra $350,000? On what?
That's a question for council.
That's just set aside for capital. That is just a capital outlay.
Then why can't you just put $150,000 away that we had away this year?
We are using for capital, that's not all-inclusive, but there are some projects that we are capitalizing that we have to get done.
Like what? My question is, what are you spending $500,000 on?
I have trucks I have to replace, I have...
For sewer?
Yeah, we have vehicles that work specifically on sewers and we have asset management plan that we're working on now. And also, this is, like again, you put into a capital budget, doesn't mean that you're going to spend that capital budget. You can cancel that capital budget at any time. This is a means for us to secure money to help us in the future if something happens. And in this year, we made a decision that we could put a little bit more in that so the borough could be self-funded in capital things that happen versus raising more debt. Doesn't mean we have to spend it, it's just there in a queue.
I thought we just bought some vehicles.
We do, we constantly do. We have a lot.
But that's not 2019.
2017.
One, four, can I just say something real quick? And this is an answer to the 2030-year issue. The legislature recently changed the NJEIT program, you borrowed most of your money, because there was a major problem with the program. The program was only allowing 40-year useful-life projects to be financed within 20 years. Just like when you have a mortgage, most people go for the 30-year mortgage because 15 years is too hard for somebody to handle. So what they allowed the borough to do was, in order to, a new sewer system is a 40-year system. The taxpayer that's here in 2001 is enjoying that sewer system the same way the taxpayer that's here in 2030, okay? And if you cram it into 20 years, that means that that resident, for those 20 years, had to pay for the whole sewer system, the brand-new sewer system. They, the way they allowed you to do it was now the laws changed, so now we can do 30-year bonds, so we don't have this 20-year problem anymore, which allows you to spread it out just like you do with the mortgage, 30-year mortgage versus 15. So what they allowed you to do here was to do 20 years for your first initial loan, to carry a series of notes for 10 years, and then push them out for another year, so you get basically a 30-year payback on your debt instead of a 20-year. And the taxpayer who's here in 2000, or a ratepayer that's here in 2030, that enjoys that same sewer system, is paying the same thing as the person that was here in 2020. So that's kind of the policy reason for having it going out over the 30 years, because it softens the blow. If we had tried to cram that in, that final note in, and have it paid off with the 20, you would have had sewer rates that were more outrageous than what you feel you're paying now. So we tried to, just like a 30-year mortgage, a lot of people take 30-year mortgages because they're easier to pay than the 15, and that's what the town tried to do in this instance, because they have a 40-year life.
The, with the, how many loans do we have open right now, or bonds, whatever you want to call them?
There's, I think there's four or five. So there's one, two, three, four, four.
Okay, when is the first one matured?
First one matures in 2021, your 2001 issue that you did for 20 years.
Okay, so that one, did you extend that one or no?
No, none of them have been extended, they're not allowed to be extended. We tried to do that originally because that was another thing that was asked when we first came in here in 2010, because there were the same issues that you're experiencing right now. The governing body at the time, the mayor and council, asked us to engage with the EIT and see if they would be willing to refinance at least their portion, because there's a portion of that debt is held by the state. The other portion is held by Wall Street, okay? So we were asking the state that, look, we have a town that we financed a lot of large sewer system over a 20-year period. At the time, that law was, what we felt was unfair, that's why they changed it now to 30, to have it longer. Would it be possible for you to extend the state portion of the loan? Because that's up to you. They said we can't do that, because then it would be a slippery slope. We'd have every town in here, all over New Jersey, coming in to extend the loan. So what they allowed us to do is take that note out for another 10 years and then finance it, so now you have a 30-year payback on all of your debt instead of a 20, on everything.
So in two years, we should see a significant decrease in our payments?
In how long?
Two years.
No, no, because that debt was falling off and...
Have we refinanced?
No, no, not that we refinanced. We had that bullet note that we were rolling year to year, that still was part of the project that had to be financed. As soon as that debt was falling off, what they did was they said, okay, now's the time in 2015 to add that in, to permanently finance it and to keep your debt service level and start to pay that off. So you didn't have a spike, say, in 2010 through 15, now you, the debt starts to fall off and then you just, you add the new one in and it stays all the same.
Okay, so we're not going to see any relief, I'm sorry, we're not going to see any relief until...
On the debt service side, there is a small change in, you know, and again, this is only on existing debt service, because future mayors and councils, and if there needs to be improvements to the system, because as a system gets to be 20, 25 years old, it starts to need to have improvements, it's just normal. It's like your home, you have to keep maintaining it or it's going to, you know, erode and you'll have worse problems down the road. So in 2023, you fall off from roughly 2.6 to 2.62. So you have about $250,000 worth of relief in that one, in that year, and it stays that way for quite some time. So it's not, again, we tried to make it like a mortgage payment that was over a 30-year period, so the people who lived in town for the 30 years, that enjoy the sewer system 30 years, would be paying it, as opposed to that one ratepayer that lived in town for 20 years, that paid it all off and had to suck the wind on it all.
So again, I thank you so much for your enlightenment. Mike, I have one question about grinder pumps. I have heard, and it's only hearsay, that the grinder pumps are going to become the homeowners' responsibility?
Yes, correct.
And it's going to be like $2,000 to repair it?
Well, I don't know what to repair it, but if the house is sold and changes hands, the new property owner owns the grinder pump.
Yeah, but we're talking of, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
If you currently have a grinder pump, after, I believe, June, I think over this year, since June of this year, if you have a problem with the grinder pump, we will replace it. After that, you own it.
Okay, now let me just ask a question. Grinder pump costs you about $2,000. I understand that you rebuild them here yourself.
We can rebuild so many times, but yes, we try very hard so we don't add that expense onto the shore utility.
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate the way you think. We have employees, even if they're the $50,000 a year guy, why are we paying $2,000 to repair a grinder pump when the parts are relatively a couple of hundred dollars, and the guy is already being on the town's clock?
That price is probably when we do them. I don't know how that price was calculated, but we don't send them somewhere to do it. We do them ourselves.
I understand that.
That's probably the cost we incur.
Well, how can you come up with a price of $2,000 for that?
I don't know. I didn't do it.
The other guy.
We certainly don't pull a number out of the air.
Then we know what it is?
I can give you the analysis on grinder pumps. Send me an email, send me a question. I will give you a thorough analysis from our DPW and our accounting people and our purchasing people. I can certainly give you that info, because I don't know it.
Okay. Well, my question is, again, you can buy a brand-new grinder pump from A1 Grinder Pumps, and they're the ones I believe that we're using, for $2,000.
The last one that came on that had a problem, they called us. They could get a used one for seventeen fifty, and a brand-new one was three grand.
Okay, so let's say, let's say three grand. I have no problem with that. How much does it cost hourly people to rebuild it? Can't take them more than an hour?
It depends.
Mike, I'm in this business. It can't take them more than an hour.
I'm in this business too. We're trying to represent our features the best we can. And I tell you, my DPW people, we just bought a new sandblaster because they were outside with some cockamamie system that didn't work. So now they do it, and if you put them on the time clock, it's not an hour's job, Jim. It might be an hour's job to unplug it, okay? It's not an hour's job to rebuild it. I can tell you that.
Okay.
If you know a better way to do it, come and see me, and I'll go down to the garage with you, and we'll train our people. But I can tell you right now.
Then I got to charge you for educating.
When they work on them, they work hard on them. So when you talk about my DPW people, I'm going to get real defensive.
You can get defensive all you like, Mike, but let me explain.
They do a good job, Jim, and I don't think they're cheating us on what it costs to rebuild it.
You're paying your guys, even if you're paying your guys $50 an hour, it does not cost eight hours' worth of work to do that. So we're talking $400 to do that, and another couple of hundred dollars to rebuild it, but we're going to charge these poor people $2,000, $3,000 to replace it?
The first one we give you.
Oh, no, no, with the June, they are.
After June, if yours goes bad, you're the original owner. After June, if yours goes bad, I'm going to replace yours, and I'm not going to charge you a dime for it.
Okay, if it goes bad next time, then you're going to charge me.
You go wherever you want. If you can get it for a thousand dollars.
But if you go back into the original ordinances, all of the grinder pumps were on the town.
You're right. But they're not now.
So you got us again.
Simon, however you want, Jim, we're trying to represent, destroy you the best we can, and keep the rate as low as we can. And so, you know, what other town in the state gave people grinder pumps? Name one. Nobody. The answer is nobody. And so we address that, and we change it in a fair and equitable manner, so that we could keep the rate low and keep the rate flat on our best day, and then we'll try to improve them there. But that's just how you do it.
Well, you have my email. Send me some stuff, and what I'll do is I'll forward you the information on how to fix them.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Come on down, and we're over that.
I can't afford it.
All the help we can. Because again, and I'll say it many times, I can't. I'm not smart enough to figure this out myself. That's why we have the professionals, and that's why we have our craft people, and we just take it from there. Any help you could be, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I need some clarification on what was just said. Next time my pump goes down, the Tesla hasn't gone down yet since 2004, okay, but the first, next time my pump goes down, this grinder pump, okay, you people are going to come in and you're going to replace it.
Yep.
The next time, then, I own the pump, the alarm goes off, whom do I call?
Plumber.
The plumber?
Yeah.
Not the town?
You own it.
That sucks.
I live over on Hudson Avenue, and so we are not involved in this problem yet, but the foremost terrifying word we can hear is the sewer is coming. And I'm, what I'm hearing, because there's so much little different pots of information that I'm being exposed to, and I, what I would love to see you all do is utilize our website better to publish projected reports of when you anticipate putting sewers into what streets.
My knowledge, I have no anticipation.
What this report should be on with, the questions that are being offered, that if we mail you a question, you'll answer it. What I think you should do is publish those letters as written and your answers as drafted on the website, so we can get more information without it being all condensed into one.
If you give me your permission to publish your letter, I will publish the answer.
And my other suggestion would be to get microphones, because it's very difficult to hear.
Okay.
Just a quick thing. Has anybody realized that, the young lady just said she's not on the sewers, but the septic system, what it costs to replace a septic system, it's going to be out of your pocket?
No, we just want to. But what I'm saying is, most of us are terrified by the consequences we hear from other people who are on the system, who are having problems selling their homes, are having financial difficulties when they do sell their homes. We're hearing rumors. I mean, there are just a lot of questions that we don't have easy access to the answers to.
Not to interrupt you, but a lot of it is just that rumors.
And I'm asking the town council to clarify on the town website.
And that's one of the things where if you spent $30,000.
I'm sorry.
No, if you spent $30,000, I had a system that pumped up with a masquerade pump. And one day, we're downstairs, and we looked in the bathroom, because there's a strange noise coming, and there was a plume of brown stuff coming out of my bathroom downstairs. The sewer had gone bad.
It was footbath, and we were down there, getting everybody's stuff.
And to me, the sewers were the best thing that ever happened, because it freed my house up now, where I don't have to have electricity in which to pump the waste out. And people down the street, we had to replace a septic about a year before. The sewers would cost $22,000.
Oh, no, I know it's a horrible expense, but what I'm saying is, given the amount of controversy, the woeful history for the last fifteen years that I've lived here, I mean, you hear things all the time that may or may not be true. I think it's incumbent upon the town to provide clear and concise information, separate the wheat from the chaff with the rumors, put it on the website, so somebody like me who's just thinking about selling my home to dodge the bullet, might not have to. We like our town.
We'll certainly tell you what we plan to do. We're not going to tell you what we're not planning to do. That's hard.
But I mean, it would just be nice to be here, the pros and the cons, what the facts are, just to understand them, what the debate is, and how you're responding to this debate. Because there's a lot of negative, there's a lot of negativity regarding this issue. And if you are such strong believers in these proposals, it would just, there's nothing wrong with more transparency and more information to the consumer and the residents.
There's nothing to believe we're not. We have it. We have to manage it as best we can.
I'm just asking.
Maybe. But if you're not on sewers, I can tell you right now with a high degree of confidence, there is no conversation, that I know of, that anticipates any extension of the sewer line in this town. That's new to me. If anybody's telling you that, it's full-blown.
Michael, that actually came from you.
That came from you.
That came from you.
Let me finish. Across the River Sticks Bridge, because you want to put 180 condos in Arrowcrest. So don't say that this is a lie, or somebody's making this up. That actually came from you.
That's a possibility, but that.
If someone wants to develop that, that's on their dime, not the town.
So running down the road? That's not on their dime.
Of course.
Yes, it is.
How is it on their dime?
Because do you want to pay for that?
I absolutely don't.
I don't either.
I absolutely don't.
So if they want to develop it, they're going to pay for it.
Ripping up river.
Because I'm with you on that. That's what they'd agree on. Well, I don't want to pay for it.
What you just said, Andrew, was very inaccurate.
Yeah.
That's what told me. That's what you told us.
You literally told, sat there.
I literally told you.
Back at us, after we even told us that.
If there was a line across that bridge, we could develop that ten acre, but it would be incumbent upon the developer to do it.
Never said that.
Yes, I did.
And why would a developer sign up to run piping along River Sticks Road?
Listen, the misinformation's got to stop. We've had three developers come to town.
John, with all due respect, Michael sat back there and told us.
And told us.
We're sitting there when we had this conversation.
In the meeting where I was?
No, no, you were there. You already left.
But there's, the town council is saying something very clear. We really don't need to debate this point. There has been no plan in any recent year to extend the sewer system into any new port.
He just said that's possible.
Could I finish my answer?
He literally just said that's a possibility.
Let me know when I can finish.
Okay. I want to know what developer pays for it. I would love to know.
So I can tell you that developers pay for sewer service extensions in many towns. It's very common.
Really?
The requests come in all the time. In another town that I sit in, we have three current applications.
Which ones?
To extend Franklin.
Which developers?
Which developers?
Mm-hmm.
The one is called JCM. Another one, we call it the zinc property.
Okay.
And the other one, we call the super Walmart site. We could track down the developers. But I can tell you, in that one town alone, there are three current discussions to extend the sewer service area, where it will be on the developer's dime. The only discussion that I've heard here, I think in the last ten years, to extend the sewer service anywhere, is if a developer came in, had a lot or an area adjacent to the sewer system, and the developer wanted to pay to extend the sewer system. Now, if you understand, and I know you guys have developed an understanding, but obviously we have the order here, if we add customers and the infrastructure is paid for by a developer, that's good for the system. It adds to the denominator.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm disagreeing if they plan to pay for it to be extended across the bridge and then up River Sticks Road, or whatever that, however far they're planning on going.
Well, we can debate that hypothetical, but what the council was clear on is the council is not doing that. The council has not funded that. There's no study for that. There's no short-term plan for that.
But there is the potential plan.
There's the potential plan that the entire town gets sewered. But given the history of sewer system.
But the problem is, is that he just sat there and said, we are not extending the sewer.
We're not. We're not. We are not. Unless the contractor pays it.
Okay. I'm telling you, a developer's not going to. I actually work in that field.
Well, if your developers, if your developers are not going to do it, you're in town.
We need you guys. Come on.
Before the sewers, the construction.
Hold on, one person speaking.
I was starting to say, before the sewer construction began, it was stated by the council, by the town, to the residents that were going to have the sewer system installed, that the town would own the grinder pumps, and the town would maintain the grinder pumps. We all signed easements, turning over portions of our property to the town so they could do the construction and maintain the grinder pumps. There was documentation from acting Mayor Hodson at the time, a fact, if you will, a six-page fact, that talked about the town owning, owning and maintaining the grinder pumps. Now, it comes to pass that we're being told that we're going to, the residents are going to own the grinder pumps. As I see it, presently, our DPW people who are in the budget already are the ones who are maintaining it. So I don't know how much savings there's going to be from DPW labor. Yes, there's material involved, but I can't imagine the material being so great that the homeowners now are going to be calling plumbers, local plumbers, who may not know how to handle this equipment, who may have no experience with it, when we have the benefit of our people now who know the equipment and know how to repair it very quickly, now not responsible for that, and putting the homeowners in a very bad position, as I see it. And I'll finish by saying that it must have been about two or three months ago, it was a very cold day, I had a problem with my grinder pump. It froze over. I called DPW, and in twenty minutes, a crew was on my property, and within an hour, an hour and a half or two, they put a temporary fix in, and I was up and running again. And I try to ask myself, if I didn't have DPW to call, then what would I do? Call the polite plumber, and he'd come when he could do it, and who knows how much experience he has? I don't think you're making a good decision. And I don't know what the justification is, nor who's gone through the financial return on turning all this equipment over to the homeowner. Can someone help me with it?
Yeah, I can. The one thing that the borough did was completely unconventional, is that they installed grinder pumps on private property. I'm not aware of any other municipality that, I'm not aware of any other municipality that actually operates it on private property. So when you go back and look at this project and how it was structured, you know, you look at how expensive it was, the amount of time that went into securing those easements, the legal, the surveying, the engineering, the construction, you know, the town ended up paying prevailing wages, which is far more than what a local contractor would do to install the grinder pump. So when you look at the cost of this project, the grinder pumps are quite substantial of why, let me finish. So the grinder pumps are quite substantial of why this project is where it is. It's because of the grinder pumps. A conventional project would be that the town would install the low-pressure sewer in the road, and then they would have a stub, and then you're responsible to install the grinder pump, maintain the grinder pump, install it and make that connection. So basically, you know, what the borough is basically, is going back to a norm where a grinder pump is no different than what, a type of pump that you have on your septic system. It's no different. So it's something that's more conventional for a homeowner to maintain these pumps, and the borough to continue to go on this unorthodox procedures of continuing with, you know, maintaining these things. That's a responsibility. So when you look at this project and the cost, the people, the people with the grinder pumps, you know, were subsidized. The people with gravity systems subsidized the grinder pumps, and they're trying to adjust that.
I hear you.
And they're trying to go back and go to a norm where the homeowner is responsible for maintaining those pumps.
I hear you. It's all very interesting information, other municipalities with other arrangements. But with all due respect, you didn't answer my question. We had a deal, if you will, homeowners, the people who pay the taxes in this town. We had a deal with the town. The town said, we own the grinder pumps, and we'll maintain the grinder pumps. It was in writing. I have it in my file. Now.
And the borough is going to continue to maintain all the actual housing, and they're going to maintain all the sewer lines in those easements. They're going to maintain that and continue.
We're talking about grinder pumps.
Exactly. Just the pumps is what the town is conveying to the homeowner.
And that's all I'm talking about. You haven't addressed anything about what I just asked Mayor Francis and council. Interesting information, but it has nothing to do with the issue. We don't want a norm. We don't care about a norm. What we care about is continuing what we had before, because, one, it's going to be expensive for homeowners to maintain it. Two, it wasn't the deal we signed up for. And three, I foresee problems going outside and finding contractors to take care of our business regarding grinder pumps, especially for the people who have large families, and that pump holding tank fills up awfully quickly. It's going to be a problem. There probably is going to be runoff, there's going to be backup. I don't understand what the savings is going to be. Who did the analysis that said the town is washing their hands of DPW servicing our grinder pumps? I think we all deserve an answer to that, and one that makes sense. We did not give you one that makes sense.
The savings are, is that the borough could probably reduce its labor forces, because it's an incredible amount of labor force that go in to maintain the grinder pump. So the overall objective of.
What did the analysis, and can we see it? All right?
Yeah, well, actually, the analysis is just not broken down. If it's broken down, you can look at. Yeah, well, absolutely. The, the analysis, it's just not broken down. If it's broken down, you can, you can look at, yeah, we could, absolutely. We could follow up with an analysis of what the savings are as a grinder pump. Absolutely, that can be done, but there is quite a bit of savings.
John, let me, let me make one point too. The, I know that discussion is now on grinder pumps. It's fine, because we're talking sewers. But the, but the, the decision that you're talking about is, is already in effect, and it was made in 2016. The council's not considering changing anything with grinder pumps right now. Nothing.
Changing anything about what?
Changing the rules about grinder pumps. The rules that were just discussed.
Right.
Were adopted in, by the, a past council in 2016. There is no issue on the table tonight about grinder pumps and changing any policy.
Why are you staring about it for the last few months?
I, I, I can't answer that for you, but it was on the books. It was published. It was on agendas. It was made, the decision was made by the sitting council in 2016. And it's in your ordinance book. It's available online. This council, as we sit here now, dealing with the rate, dealing with the information coming from the auditors, they're not changing any policy with respect to the grinder pumps. That decision was made three years ago.
Why can't it be changed?
Those decisions can always be changed, but.
That's my point. So make sure change too.
That's not, that's not.
What percentage of the people have grinder pumps in town, and what's the failure rate on that percentage?
I don't know.
About nine hundred grinder pumps out there, give or take.
How many pumps are there?
About three thousand people. I think there's about nine hundred.
That many?
Yeah.
Can an arrangement be made, like, I feel for the people that have it. Can an arrangement be made that the town repairs them and gives them a fair price of doing it versus them going out and, and having to find a plumber who might not?
We'll, we'll entertain any, any question or any request as, as such. Get it?
Even into their taxes where they're not outlaying?
All right. You go.
I just have a question. Just kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Truman just said. So, what, the grinder pumps were put in in 2003? Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, whatever it is.
So, now, when they engineered this, did they engineer it so each pump had to, like, operate by itself? Or do they all have to operate in use?
No, they're individual, minor.
Okay, so if my pump or my neighbor's pump breaks down, and we can't, so we can't afford to, to fix it? Or they can't find a guy to fix it? Am I gonna be, I mean, does that gonna impact me?
No.
Okay, and then, um, my last question. So, in 2003, the pumps were put in, okay? And then in 2016, they said they're gonna, what, they're gonna do orders in 2020 or 2019?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, okay. And then, does anybody in the room know the average lifespan of a, of a grinder pump? Because we're getting a bad deal. If 2003 to 2019, that time goes by, now, you know, it's, like, your warranty's up on your car, you're stuck, you know?
The warrant, the warranty is eight years, and it depends on the usage. If you have, you know, minor usage, it'll go, you know, you'll get many years out of it, but if you have heavy usage, it'll be less.
Right, so I, I, I think where I'm going with this is, not, not the failure rate, but just the, I mean, at, time after time after time since 2003, what is that, sixteen years or something? I mean, they're gonna go bad, and we're, we're getting stuck with that. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, they're not gonna last forever.
If they're properly maintained, they can last a very long time. I'm sorry. You asked me a question about the longevity of the pump.
Okay.
If you put grease and hair and all of this stuff that ruins your septic system and ruins your pumps in your house, you're gonna have a short lifespan on that. There are some pumps in this town that have been replaced or repaired at least six times. There are some people that still have the original pumps. It depends on the usage. That's what John said. It depends on the usage.
So they're very affected by the homeowner?
But they're also, they're gonna go bad, whether you dump the grease in there or not. And so would they, like, we're getting the tail end of that.
My, my understanding.
Yeah, now, you, you did realize though, if you're the original owner of that, and it goes bad, we're gonna give you the next one. So take that extension time, whatever your usage, abuse or otherwise is, and, and go that route. So that's not, you're not gonna get that in nineteen. You'll get the extension of the life of that pump when yours fails. So at no cost. So.
It's not a grinder pump question.
Yes, sir.
I have a little story to tell about these grinders. When they installed these, the engineer come up their property, walked up the yard, told me everything, and he said, "Oh, no, you won't need a grinder pump." I said, "Okay." They installed it. I wound up with a grinder pump. I went down to Mayor Hodson, and I says, "Why do I have a grinder pump?" He says, "Well, we would have to blast the hill five feet down." I said, "Oh," but they blasted a quarter of a million dollars down on Lakeside Boulevard, the Smithys over there. But they couldn't blast five feet down on the Rickard Avenue to do away with the grinder pumps. I think it's unfair that the people are gonna be charged to replace those pumps. And I think the town ought to think about it.
I think life's unfair. I also think that.
I may have misunderstood the meaning, purpose of the meeting, and I, he kinda just bounced off of it, but I just wanted to confirm. Is the sewer and/or water, or both, ever going to be charged proportionately based on the usage of the dwelling? No, no. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Yes.
I've been dying to ask my question for three months. Yes. So I have the bond attorney here, yes?
Yes.
I have the CFO here, yes? Okay. How much is available on a sewer-specific unfunded bond? How much is unfunded? How much do we have unfunded in the bonds?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
The last time I was here, I asked the question. Are we going, is there, could we make a master ordinance canceling?
Are you asking, is there, are there excess proceeds?
She's talking about the bond orders.
Yes.
She's confusing the project cost with the debt cost. Maybe you could explain that a little better, because I, I never listen to this.
Okay, so your question is, is there excess amounts of money available to pay off the bonds? Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking, do we have bonds that are not funded, or any terms and conditions that are not funded? For instance, the 2016 bond that we refinanced, and the 2006 bond, the finance from the 99 and oh three bond, okay? That was up to twenty million dollars. That, that bond ordinance was passed, up to twenty million dollars. We only took fourteen point two. And the way it's been explained to me is that we have authorization to use up to twenty million dollars, and also funded fourteen point two million dollars.
From what the owners told me just before, I was hearing that there's no unauthorized, unissued debt in the state.
So they're just, okay, thank you.
But she's, she's asking a question. I just wanna see if I can find it. You really wanna know what, what's unspent?
Correct, yes. Thank you.
Well, that's why I said, is there excess proceeds?
But not, because I've paid down the debt. I'm saying that we passed a bond for twenty million dollars, and you only used fourteen point eight.
And then what do you wanna do with what's left over?
I want canceled. I wanna make it so that we can.
It's not issued anyway, but I think that we, we have. Said that there's no authorized, unissued debt.
She's really not asking about the debt. She's asking about the project cost. She's asking about the improvement authorization.
I think she might be confusing, she might be confusing the ordinance, which gives the council or the sewer department up to a certain amount to take out the bond. Then you come along and go, okay, and you look at all the numbers, and you go, you know what, she did fourteen million, not twenty. Do it for fourteen. We all vote yes, and she's thinking that there's an extra six million sitting somewhere that we borrowed, that they borrowed.
Because we already passed the ordinance for up to twenty. We can take another five point two million dollars down. That's gonna come to us.
Why don't you go ahead and answer the unauthorized, unissued? Sure. So, uh, you were asking, basically, I think what you're asking is, is is available money that can still go out bond for?
Yes.
The answer's no.
No. The answer's no?
The other question I thought you asked was simply was, of the improvement authorizations that may have been previously bonded or funded through, through, through the budgeted capital improvement fund, is there money left that's unspent? Yes, there is some money left unspent. There's roughly four hundred thousand dollars left at the end of 2018.
You're not paying that.
Okay. Which ordinance is that under? Thirty-seven fourteen is, is the bulk of it, um, and then there's, you know, fifty fast. Thirty-seven fourteen is in what year? Uh, fourteen. Fourteen, okay. Yeah.
So there's some in that thirty-seven fourteen?
Yeah, there's some, like, in the next five. That was for new improvements, but the.
New im- but, new improvement's on what?
No, but from 2014, when you have new, when you do a new bond ordinance for whatever they needed to do that year, they may have had some extra mon- that money that they haven't spent yet. When you do the bonds in 2016, the Internal Revenue Service requires to you to use any excess proceeds to pay down the bonds. So we have to do that analysis before we issue the 2016 refunding bonds and pay off anything that's outstanding. So there's no excess proceeds underneath the 2016 where you say there's just six million dollars hanging around. And on top of that, it, it at some point must've been canceled. Right, and so, so what John's really getting at is, is that that money may or may not be available for other capital purposes, or may have to be directly associated to the repayment of bonds that was issued originally through bonds. Correct. So we don't know. That, that analysis hasn't been done. What we do know is there's roughly four hundred thousand unspent ordinances that exist at the end of 2018.
That are sewer-specific?
Sewer-specific. Are there proceeds? I can't tell that was. Okay.
Um, is there, is there any recommendation to change the commercial ordinance for the sewers?
Well, I think, I think that's part of the, um, the grand picture here. So really, this is, as I said before, phase one was to go through and just get an idea of where the costs are, get our hands around it. What do we think the projected costs are gonna be? And then at that point, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go back and evaluate the current existing structure and try to come up with some recommendations as to how that structure can be modified.
So one of those, the ways that that structure can be modified is by taking it from per unit and make, uh, per, per unit and doing a per establishment for the commercial units?
Well, I'm not gonna speculate on how, on how it can be done.
But it could.
You, listen, there's, there's a million different ways to slice and dice it up, um, honestly. But I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna try to look at what, what we think is, is a more fair or accurate approach. We'll come back to the mayor and council, obviously, at that point, uh, and then I assume we're gonna have another meeting at that point to go over the next phase of the report.
Okay.
And that's what we'll do.
Because if you're basing it on an EDU, right, and an EDU, I'm being charged for two hundred gallons a day as a, as a, as a home, right? One-bedroom, two-bedroom home, whatever it is, okay? Each establishment, commercial property-wise, should then be billed as an EDU, not as an EDU and then meter.
You know, it could, you, listen, it could be based on all flow, which would be really, uh, wouldn't be cost-effective, because if you did the residential all course.
Well, then they wouldn't be paying into any of the construction costs.
There's lots of ways to look at it, and I think we need to go back and analyze. I don't wanna jump ahead of things here. I'd really rather just reserve that for the next phase of our report that's gonna come out, and then we'll sit and address all those questions based upon what we think is the correct approach, or that the governing body thinks is the correct approach.
Okay. I have two more questions, and they're kind of linked into one another. What's the plan, uh, if you have any, to determine who isn't hooked up and should be? We've already found one person that is not hooked up and should be. I'm sure there are others.
I think that if you read the report that we have, I think it actually might be in there as, as, as a suggestion or a comment that, um, as part of the process, and it is gonna be a, a process, it was, irregardless of how we go through that and come up with the next phase, really what has to happen is exactly what you're saying. I think everybody needs to go back, and I think from the administrative side, determine, do we have all the commercial units accurately reflected?
I'm not talking about the commercial units. I'm talking about residential units that are not, that have available sanitary sewer and have never hooked up. And now I'm also going to bring up the gentleman that was sitting here that told us that he has access to sanitary sewer. He's paying his quarterly fee and is in violation of a federal law. What's being done about those people?
I don't know. You have to ask the legal team.
Well, I've been, I've been asking, and we've been asking since December, what's being done.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly not my, my curfew, but, um.
But you guys didn't look into that in your analysis on the sewers?
No, no, we haven't, no, we haven't.
John, are we breaking federal law?
Yes, I, I didn't know that.
What did you say?
No, we're not.
If you're not, if you have available, if you're, if you have access to sanitary sewer and you are not hooked up, it is a violation of the federal laws. The Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy seven? Yeah. When the river was on fire.
Nobody?
I was important, but I don't know.
I was.
But yeah, me too. Because the gentleman that was sitting here who said, "I have a septic in my backyard that I use, but I have sanitary sewers in my street," he's paying his quarterly fee and not hooked in. So do we just let those guys go because they're paying? Because I can tell you now, I know of at least two houses that are like that. At least two. And I guarantee you there are more like that.
John, are you aware?
Well, I, I guess the, the history behind the connections was that the Board of Health actually sent the letters out to all the property owners who are identified in the original project to be, to connect. And then they had, you know, I believe it was ninety day, I don't ca- know the exact time, I think it was ninety, they had to connect. And then they, um, and then there was the process of the construction code official went out and did the inspection. So I'm sure we can look through his records and make sure and identify everyone who has a final inspection. I know there's quite a few that have not been signed off because of, of issues of, of they never closed. One reason or another, they didn't never provide documentation that the tank was properly pumped out, and Bill never closed them out. And so I think the construction department does have some follow-up on closure of some of the building permits. But we should have the records of, of everyone that has connected, and that, and that's something we can ease, because that's Bill doing the physical inspection. He inspected the pipe going in. We can take that database. We could probably easily just put it into GIS, plot it up, and identify everyone that, that's connected. And obviously, if someone's missing, we can explore that further, but I think it would start, I don't think we've done, we have, I haven't been involved in that exercise of having Bill O'Connor go through his database and do it.
I was hoping to have that, that report done tonight, but he didn't finish it, because it takes, it's time-consuming. He's working on the Excel spreadsheet that, that we got, which part of it we couldn't read, or whatever we couldn't read.
Okay, so Bill O'Connor is working on it, and he's gonna report back to you regarding, you know, everyone, all, his whole list and, and identify the inspection. So that would be the verification that someone is properly connected, and, and he can identify, he can also identify who has outstanding permits, and that could, that could probably expedite this, so we're not, because it's gonna take a while for him to close out those permits. So if he can generate that list, we, we, we can cross-check that and, and expedite that process.
So then every, every person who has a sewer or was, is, has access to a sewer, because we can't, you know?
Yeah, it's a very simple exercise, once, once Bill gets his, the, the database, because we can, we can superimpose that on top of the sewer maps by block and lot and identify exactly who's, who's in front of a sewer, and then we can, it will, it will just, it'll show us immediately.
That's what he's doing.
What's that?
That's what he's doing.
Yeah, he's, he's working on that database. So as soon as he has that database, we can, we can do the exercise. It's not a difficult exercise to actually put that in plan view against the sewer lines, and we can very easily, you know, cross-check that.
So, so there, so there is a sewer map then?
There, there's the design drawings, yes.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, this is the line drawings.
Our, our building department has that, because he does the inspection and the.
I, I was told, I was told that you guys did not have a map. I was told, and in a response to my ovation.
You were told that there wasn't an as-built survey, so.
You asked for an as-built draw?
I asked for an as-built map.
Correct.
There is, there you go.
There is not one. We only have a design.
Oh, I see. I see. I see how it is. I'm gonna ask you guys.
Yeah, just a terminology. You have the, the, what the contractor's built, we have that plan of what they were constructing off of, uh, but we don't have a, you know, we didn't go out and resurvey that to, to do that.
I'll be real quick. I just wanna ask about the numbers real quick. Um, okay, so you know what actual versus expected was for seventeen and eighteen? You have, especially the surplus?
Yes, what you're looking at, seventeen is actual results. Eighteen is actual results. Nineteen is projected.
What, what was the projected versus the actual?
I think he's asking versus what you're.
Yeah, I mean, we have the data. I don't have it here. I mean, I have.
Well, can you tell me, north or south?
Well, I can tell you that typically, that the budgeted, because we're not running deficits. So the budgeted expenditures are gonna be higher than the actual. And then when we look at the budgeted revenues, our budgeted revenues are typically gonna be lower than what's realized. Because we don't wanna run operating deficit, and we run positive surplus numbers.
So then what hap- what's hap- what happens after 2020, when your surplus goes up? What, what's the, what, why is the cost for that?
Excuse me?
Your surplus 2020 goes up in 2021. Why does it go down and go up for that year, projected, the first time?
I understand what your, what your question is. Um, but the surplus anticipated, really, that's, that's the number that you need to budget, to balance the budget, okay? What you're really seeing here, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go over here.
No, I'm asking what it is. Why does it go up?
No, that's why I'm, I'm answering your question. It's going up because I need to. No, that's why I'm answering your question, it's going up because I need to put more money in from surplus to balance the budget, because I have to have a balanced budget going forward. So I'm relying more on surplus to balance the budget in twenty twenty-one. That's why the number's going up.
But there's not a plan for why you're coming out with a higher surplus?
Well, expenses are going up every year, as Paul had indicated earlier. We did all these projections based on certain expenses, like utilities going up five percent, pension going up seven percent, medical benefits going up seven percent, et cetera. So your expenses are going up, if you look at the bottom line, total expenditures in twenty twenty, twenty twenty is formerly in four hundred ninety-one thousand, twenty twenty-one is formerly in five fifty-one. It's up roughly sixty thousand, and by surplus, I had to utilize the balance, the budget is up sixty thousand.
Depreciation is, this is like an income statement.
There is no, there is no... There is no depreciation schedule in municipal account. We're not depreciating any assets.
Oh, okay.
Why do the rents go down? Why do the rents go up in eighteen and then down in nineteen and stay the same nineteen, twenty, twenty-one?
Because in seventeen and eighteen, you're looking at actual results. And when we get into, if you looked at the budget on seventeen and eighteen, those projected rents would be lower than the amount that's sitting in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Gotcha, I understand.
It's just the variance between actual versus projected results, the budget.
Right. What is the cost of doing all these surveys and going back in history? We are not gonna be able to save or change because they've already been in the...
This rate study cost fifteen thousand dollars.
For phase one? That's, that was my question. We paid fifteen thousand dollars to see the numbers. So now we go to phase two of this audit or rate study, and that's gonna be another bill.
And how much is this going to cost?
No, I'm asking a question.
That's my question. Is this just an act of futility that some people wanted to do and cost us taxpayers the money?
It's based, it's based a lot on our discomfort with the history and, and the way it was established, and we're trying to make sure that we make sense out of the numbers as we have them today.
That's, that's what we need to do, is go from here to there versus look back to there.
Count this as a process, I would like to say this is just the beginning, but it's not, we're a little bit past the beginning. But this gives us, this gives us information as a governing body and as a sewer water committee to, to get some meat, if you will, to, to dig into, to look at rates and to look at how we're managing, and to look at the cost utility. At the end of the day, we have to make sure, at least my goal is, is so that we, we don't have to raise rates. My, ultimately, I would like to affect the rates by smart management, and that means affecting them in a way that, that's beneficial to, to the sewer users. And that's how we get here. I can't get here by looking in my rearview mirror, I'm sorry, I can't. I have to look at this, I have to look at some projections. We have a bond attorney here and say, is this the very best we can do with our debt? Is this the best we can do? And when we refinance, was that the best thing we could have did at the time? Because I can tell you, with my limited knowledge, that if we didn't refinance, your sewer rate probably around seven hundred dollars a quarter. Is that too far off?
I don't know how much you were raised, but you would have higher debt service, that's absolutely the case.
Yes, you would, and so what we're trying to do is come back and make some sense out of what we have today.
So phase two is going to be...
What's phase two?
Whatever the step is after this one.
The next step.
The next step is, is the responsibility of this council and water and sewer committee to take this with the advice and consent of, of our professionals and, and operate our sewer at an economical, in an economical, fair way. When we get to the rate, I don't know what that's gonna look like yet.
What's the recommendation? What's the recommendation?
I wish I had the answers for you, but I don't, I'm sorry.
But they do, they have the recommendations.
This is a work product that we're, that we're starting to work with.
So we have another part of this that needs to be done?
Yeah, that's on us.
Well, on the, meaning that it's not gonna cost us any, it's not another fifteen thousand dollars for four months worth of waiting?
Right, no.
Okay, that's all I was asking. But they wrote this report, and you would have made recommendations?
I just got here late, I don't know what this question was asked. When I purchased my house about three years ago now, my house was a foreclosure, it was abandoned for three, four years. When I went into escrow, we found out that Fannie Mae, Fannie Mac, where I bought the house from, hadn't paid the bill in almost two years. Can I ask, why wasn't there a lien based on the property? Why wasn't that step ever taken? At the end, they did pay, I had to come here and find out what they owed. Well, doesn't the town have first rights on putting a lien on a property that hasn't been paid for?
Look, I, I don't know your situation, but it, it sounds like they did put a lien on your property.
They did, they did.
You say, you say they didn't, but a title search is done when you buy a house?
Yes.
Part of the title search is that the tax collector and the water and sewer collector reports on what's owed in arrears. Those are considered without any further action of the town. Those are first liens on your property.
They never put a lien because I had to come here and get the records. Because I, when I came to pay the first bill, was when we found out that it was past due.
I think it showed up in your title search.
No, no, and we had a clean title, we got a clean title issued and had title insurance on my property.
I think that if that's true, the title company insurance would have paid.
Yeah, yeah, they did pay, they paid, but why did it take two years?
I think it's more about your title company than it is about the town.
Yeah.
No, no.
That's not the thing, the thing is, there was no lien based on the property.
The lien is, when you don't pay your water and sewer, and you don't pay your real estate taxes, it's reported by the collectors, it automatically goes into the computer system, it's searchable by the title companies, and it's automatically a lien against the property.
Okay, I didn't come up on his title search. He came here to pay the bill, and they told him he owed five thousand dollars. And then he called up and said...
Sounds like not the best title search.
Okay, but if there's no lien, then there's no, it's not gonna come up in the title search.
There's a lien.
Who paid you bill?
Fannie Mae, Fannie Mac. Fannie Mae, Fannie Mac, they, they...
Here's the answer to the question, they realized that, that's a lien.
Yeah, but why did it take, like, why wasn't anything done for two years by the town to try to collect from Fannie Mae, Fannie Mac?
There's, 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 I'm trying to guess about how many, but hundreds of closings done in a borough like Hope County in a year, maybe more. And every one, the computer system that the title search companies use, pick up the liens for arrears on taxes and water and sewer fees, and they're paid at closes.
So how, what's the percentage of properties in Hope County that have, are owing, owing back sewer bills?
So you, it's, it's a number that might be on the website. The tax collector keeps track of the uncollected taxes, and the tax collection rate will be in the mid nineties? What, what is it?
It's above ninety-seven.
So in Hope County, it's...
Close to ninety-eight percent.
It's above ninety, it's above ninety-seven, almost ninety-eight percent in Hope County.
They break it down by sewer and taxes, so it's all the same?
It's just taxes.
Well, that's a, that's a... Can you break it out by taxes, by sewers?
It probably could, if you want, but that's not how it's done currently. It's not a requirement.
Yeah, like, why isn't it in income statement? What's wrong with it?
We're just paying up.
Yeah, what happens with the people that are not paying, yet were paying for the sewer bill?
So once the tax, the tax collector handles this, but once an amount in real estate taxes or water and sewer charges remains unpaid for the statutory amount of time, it goes up for tax sale. It's either purchased by an outside tax lien purchaser, and then the funds are with the town, or nobody bids on it, and the town has that lien. And then they have to wait for somebody to come and redeem it, or eventually the property is foreclosed on.
But what's the percentage of it, like, how many houses does Hope County actually do that to? Like, like...
All the ones that were required to do it to.
How long?
The collection rate is ninety-eight percent. The number of in-rem foreclosures in a town like Hope County might be ten over two or three years that actually reach that state. In fact, you know, unfortunately, one of the results of it is that the town ends up with some of those properties that aren't valuable, that have gone through the foreclosure process, and Hope County ends up owning more real estate than, than frankly, the borough would like.
On the bottom of the sheet, it says, "Does a fund balance due for every year"? What happens to that money?
It's cash on hand, it's available money to be used for future budgets or expenditures.
But couldn't that be used to maybe reduce the sewer rate?
Well, that, that money could be used to offset some of the sewer rate increases, and I think that's one of the things we're also looking at again. But again, I don't wanna get into the details of what this next phase is gonna be, but certainly is looking at the available surplus and determining what can be done and where that number should, should be at. And it's gonna be a positive decision.
Because my sewer bill generates the surplus.
It does, it does, yeah. So that's one of, one of the components that we're also looking at.
The other thing is, is what you were saying, that you're gonna save a lot of money with these grinder pumps, now transferring them over to the owners. Is there any intention of taking some of that manpower dollars and putting that towards the sewer? Saying you can save a lot by transferring all this over?
They can reduce.
Transfer over then into the sewer rates?
Definitely, yeah. Absolutely, that, that's the whole exercise.
Yeah.
That's the whole exercise, and, and we don't have a number, but that's the exercise.
Obviously, the whole point is to get our rates down.
Yes, that's...
What we're paying is a ridiculous amount.
You're exactly right.
You look at, you know, you look at other towns, and they're paying six hundred dollars for the whole year, you know, so...
Yes.
I just wanna make sure that we're looking at where we're saving those dollars is going right back into the sewer and not somewhere else.
Absolutely, by law, it can't. Utility money is, that's, utility users' money. It does not leave there. And so it's up to us to make sure we manage it correctly, up or down. And so I'd like to affect the rate personally. I just don't know how, but this is, this is the step, and that's why we spend the money on this with these people, because these numbers and our bond agent, you can hang your hat on their information, their licenses depend on it. They just don't do this as a hobby. So we, we take this very seriously, you know? And so we, we look at the fund balance, and we look at how we manage it. And so overall, it all leads back to how can we affect what it costs you? And how can we do this without shooting ourselves in the foot or you, on, on a sustainable basis? So what we do, our, our job here is to, is to crunch these numbers and come up with, with a plan that we can sustain. I'd love to say, you know, if we, we cut you all this, but the next year, oh, well, we, we didn't forecast a rate, so now we're gonna raise it. We never wanna go there. So if you might see small increments, if, if you see any, they're gonna be small, but we're gonna take a look at what that does compared to what we forecast. Because none of us have crystal balls, but we, this is a whole exercise. It, it, your exact question.
Right.
The lady in purple, she said it.
Sure, all right, go ahead.
I'm really new to this. I actually voted the first time this past November because I hate this. I hate this. Trump made me do it. Okay? For fifteen thousand dollars, that's a crap report we gave. We needed broken down. Twenty, we wanna know percentages. I worked twenty-five years at Honeywell. We were told we weren't getting the cost of living rates for five years because they had to work on a budget. Is there a union or something that says they have to get money? Well, you better figure something out, because we're not getting it, and you're asking us to pay it. So that's, that's the little thing, fifteen thousand dollars, we need that broken down. Okay?
Just doesn't add up.
Oh, that, is that, well, you can't add it up, because we don't have percentages on what they used, on what, what...
What, what you're, where you're looking at is one exhibit of a report that is, I don't know, how many pages?
Uh, thirteen pages.
Thirteen pages. Where's the report?
Give us a report.
We can read.
Where's the report?
Where's our pie chart?
We hear the on the website, probably tomorrow or today.
Thank you for saying that. But is it broken down still? A lot you said, medical, this, that, and the other.
All the, all the details are in the report that will be up on the website.
Then when they buy new vehicles, do you get three estimates on what it costs to repair them instead of buying new?
Oh, absolutely. We do all types of physical analysis on all, or...
Okay, would we see that anywhere on the website?
No. No, you don't.
Was, is that, when you put a, a thing up that says we have to buy a new vehicle, okay? Did you add what the estimates were and why we decided to buy new?
Absolutely, we do, I do, I, for every vehicle I buy, I do an estimate on the cost, the previous cost of repair, the age of it, the life expectancy of it, and what it, what it would cost to replace it.
Okay.
Or even if the vehicle's still running at all.
That's on the, the purchase record, something that we would see?
That's in the capital plan, every year we put in a capital plan. All those capital requests come in, and that analysis is done on every vehicle. I make my guys do every, a reverse car back.
Is it broken down by the chi?
Absolutely. Cap, and the capital, and the capital that it comes, that is... A couple different capital budgets that we have vehicles in, is there a normal operating budget it has? No, but sewer has a capital budget as well. If I'm gonna replace a vehicle in, for sewer, I would do the exact same analysis.
Okay, now, when an ordinance is changed, I think I have the terminology correct. When it's rewritten, I'm not quite sure it redirects when it was brought up, why it was brought up, reasons it was changed. Now, a very simple, very simple example is peddling and solicitation. Okay, that's a really easy one, that was passed, I believe, October of last year. It allows them to come between nine a.m. and six P.M. That's unacceptable.
So, the, the U.S. Supreme Court, so...
That we have to allow that to happen.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
A lot of times are hands in time.
Let, let me just be specific, because you haven't been at meetings, so every ordinance comes up for a first reading, so it's introduced, people know what's going on, it's on the agenda. Every ordinance has a public hearing, and then every ordinance has the second reading in the book, okay? And often, a lot of the questions you're asking, those things are just very regularly discussed at the council, and the reasons why. And I can tell you that the solicitation ordinance was not popular, but a series of U.S. Supreme Court, federal court decisions started alerting us to the fact that there was a group in Texas raising a constitutional argument that if you ended the solicitation time at six P.M., that you were hurting solicitors because no one was home. And that there was a constitutional right to be able to contact people and have your commerce and have your interaction and so forth, and that they needed a reasonable accommodation in lots of the cases. I think it says nine P.M. I think by memory, it was nine P.M. And the council was not thrilled with that, but we were alerted to that from our insurance company who monitors these things. We looked into it, and it, that change was made in a number of towns.
Okay.
And, and a number of towns didn't make the change, have been sued and have paid damage.
Okay.
So that's a neat, like, that's a good...
Who made, who came up with the fee?
The fee for...
Seventy-five dollars for peddling and soliciting a lot?
I, I think that fee's been in the ordinance a long time, I don't know.
Okay, but that's made by us?
The ordinance fee is made by us, the permit fee is made by us, yes.
Okay, so if we, or I learned how to do this, and we say we want it raised to five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, because I'm tired of people coming to my door, asking me to change electricity and all this other stuff, and the safety factor. These people stand right in front of my door. They should be instructed to stand back ten feet from the door. My mother, I was... It was very uncomfortable for her. It was not right, you're not, you're not making it easy or protecting the citizens by not requiring ID vests, these, but not us providing it for them. These vendors who are applying should require photo IDs, a vest with who they are with, something bigger than a little ID card, you know, put it on the back of their clipboard with all this paper they want us to sign. There has to be steps made to make it safe. They have to be told they need to step back. We even did that in cert when we were trying to help people, tell people where to go for warming stations. We went to the door, we stepped back so we wouldn't be intrusive to anyone. Something needs to be changed, and I, I have to try to, but that's a simple thing. And I have to try to, but that's a simple thing. That, that's, I don't see, I don't even remember when it was done. I only heard it by accident when I read about it because all this stuff, I started going through all the ordinances. There's so many things that are not clear. People don't know. I also think that the senior bus should be used to transport people here because there's people that will not come down after dark, won't drive. So, that's an option too. Let's think about using that a little more than during the day. So, I'm really confused and really sad that this is going on. We do love the town, we just want to know what's going on. I want it broken down. I want to see what numbers they use, what percentages, because I'm not stupid. I'm not. But we can't guesstimate what this stuff is. So, I can't wait to see this big report of cost $1,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's important. Let me, let me just say something. So, are we saying in 19, since the Masrator pumps or whatever are going, we're going to reduce labor and we're going to, that's why you're seeing it? The numbers go down for operating, that's where it's at? Is that right?
Now, the issue with the grinder pumps is that they didn't incorporate into this, because this is a short-term projection. If they were going to do a 15-year projection, then they would, because there is going to be a transition before the town's efforts associated with the grinder pumps is going to diminish over time.
Oh, so that's...
It's not going to be 2019, boom, it's, it's not. We're going to be, we're going to still be servicing, we're going to be replacing. There's still going to be effort. So, it's going to be a couple of years before that's realized.
I was going to say $41,000, but getting rid of one guy. I got you. Thank you, no, I appreciate that.
If I, if I could, then just a couple of comments. You know, there were just, you know, the comments regarding, you know, the efforts that were done by the owners. And there has been a lot more done besides just this Phase 1 report. There's been a lot of discussion regarding the rates. And I think it should be beneficial, just to kind of touch base on some of the discussions that we've been having, because I think it's important. And just trying to give some background here regarding, you know, as I stated before, it was the DEP permitting that started the process. And then, based on the DEP permitting, they did theoretical flows of what the flow rate is going to be. And so, and the ordinance was established before the sewer was actually connected because we had to get all this in place before everyone started. And so, when you're looking at the, so the expectation, when we initially did the permitting based on the flow projections, there was no expectation that this was, there was going to be a lot of reserve capacity and a lot more development and that we were going to be adding more connections. In fact, the representation by the DEPs is that there wouldn't be a lot of expansion because of the limited flow capacity that we had. So, in the very beginning of project, there was no expectation that we're going to have all this excess flow and possibly more connections. And so, that's really why the, you know, so with that, and when we did go through this, it was, we do have a limitation. I mentioned before, it's 580,000 gallons a day. What's very important for us when we manage the sewer, sewer flows is that we cannot exceed that capacity. We exceed that capacity, there's major penalties, and then it's, it's an issue regarding you. It's, it'd be a lot of complications dealing with DEP, dealing with capacity assurance issues. And so, it's important when we're looking at what flow we have, how we manage it. So, we always have to recognize that we can't, you know, connect everyone and go all the way to our 100% allocation because we are going to have, flows will vary. And flow, we will have infiltration and inflow. And so, we have to have a reserve capacity for that dynamics, you know, on the long-term projections. Because, you know, the sewer's here, it's going to be here for 15, 100, 200 years. You know, we're not digging up the sewers and going back to septic. So, we're always going to have, you know, these long-term. So, we have to, you know, keep this management on the flows that we have. And the, I'm just looking through my notes, a lot of things were discussed, and I don't want to repeat myself on, you know, some of the, some of the things. So, just looking at the, the original flow projections, the, what we did observe over, over the years is that the sewer flows have gone down. And when we look at in 2013, time, I'm sorry, 2009, 2011, you know, we were well over 480,000 gallons. That's, that was our sewer flows. And that was, you know, in line with our projections and what we had. And then in 2000, you know, in that timeframe, we had the economy crash. And so, all the, since that time, our flows have been drastically going down. You know, for the last couple of years, our flows have been approximately less than 80, 380,000 gallons, which when you take the 120 gallons per day per resident, the commercial, we're about, we're about that capacity at 380. So, what that's showing us is that we really don't have a lot of infiltration at this point in time. So, it's really not an issue, but it will come. Our system, you know, we have a system that's, that's modern compared to when a lot of systems went in the seventies with EPA grants, they're, you know, it wasn't the same material, it wasn't the same quality control. So, we're not going to get, we're not going to experience the II issues that a lot of older communities have until further down the road. But we will have them eventually. So, with that, we've seen this drastic change. And we also see the drastic change with our water system too. We were, we were, our discharge or diversion was approximately 500,000 gallons a day and now we're almost 400. So, we've dropped about another 100,000 with our water system too. So, it is an issue that we have to manage. You know, we really don't know exactly why everything plummeted that way. It could be the economy, it could be vacant homes, it could be the fact that we were now, the EPA mandated that you have low-flow fixtures. So, eventually, people are changing toilets and they're doing so, we can see that. But we are at a situation where we do have excess capacity. We still have to manage that. You know, so when we're looking at projects like the redevelopment area, we do have capacity for that, but we still have to be cautious. You know, we've always made the representation at the sewer committee meeting that we don't have enough gallonage to actually go across the bridge with those larger projects. We, yeah, we have enough projects for, you know, infilling, for, you know, redevelopment of commercial properties, but, you know, we have some gallons, but we still have to be cautious with that. So, so when we're looking at the current billing is getting into the billing issues. Like, right now, the residential is 1 EDU, and there really is no flow limitation at all. We did 1 EDU, even if you flow 1 gallon, or if you spend 2,000 gallons or 1,000 gallons a resident, there's no limitation on the flow for the resident. And one of the things when we're talking about an EDU is that when you look at the costs that are being projected here, a lot of the costs are fixed. The debt is a debt, we have a mortgage payment. We have, you know, commitment to MSA. And in fact, we're below the minimum allocation that we have. So, we're paying gallonage, we're paying a set fee regardless because we haven't even had that threshold. So, you know, with the variation of flows, if all of a sudden it drops more, it's regardless because we're still paying MSA a minimum amount. So, we have that. We have, you know, some of the labor costs are fixed. So, there's not a lot of variable in our, in our operating budget. You know, it says 1.7, but with the MSA, it really doesn't. So, you know, there is a, a lot of the funds that are being collected is just going towards that fixed cost. So, on the commercial side, we have a different arrangement where we're taking into account flow. And with flow, we have, they have to charge, we charge 1 EDU, and if they go in excess of 22,000 gallons, they pay excess per 1,000 gallons on that. So, the 22,000 gallons was a, was established, was basically taking that 200 gallons a day and prorating it for a quarter, but it also increased it because we assumed, it's in the ordinance actually, that there's, there's a consumption associated, that 20% of the water that's being consumed, is being consumed, and so therefore, it's not going through the sewer system. So, that's where the 22,000 came from. And we also have a variable that's 19.18 per 1,000 gallons they pay. I frankly don't know where that number came from, to be frank. Because if you take the EDU cost of 322.50 and divide that by the 22,000, it's going to be 14. So, for some reason, the commercial properties are not paying for, above the 1 EDU, they're actually paying 420, approximately $420 per that additional EDU proportion of flow going up. What's clear from our discussions is that what this theoretical flow of coming up with an equivalent EDU is not really applicable because the flows have gone down. So, there's seemed, you know, over the years, we were looking at, looking at the businesses from an equitable standpoint of increasing, making that adjustments because it's no longer applicable of what we have. Another issue is, look at Hudson-Maxum School. You know, here, it's vacant. And if you look at that from a perspective from a public, because all the schools pay a sewer fee, but you can also look at that if it was a commercial piece of property. Since it's vacant now, they're paying 1 EDU. That's all they're paying. And, you know, previously, that school was paying 1,100, approximately 1,100 per quarter. So, but what we're also discussing is the fact that here you have a major building and that's only paying 1 EDU, yet we are reserving the capacity for that building because the buildings may be occupied, it may be transferred over to a commercial, what have you. But, so we're also looking at the, is that fair, the fact that commercial properties, they can go vacant and they just have to pay 1 EDU, where we're reserving a lot of flow associated with them being on the system? Because we can't just give up that flow, we have to reserve it for them because they are going to, they're not going to be vacant all the time. So, you know, we are starting to look at the scenario of going to an EDU basis for the commercial properties. That's a discussion. Again, I'm just bringing it out, there's nothing to finalize, but we are looking at that as a possibility of going to a flat rate for the, for the commercials and no longer doing metering. And basically, base those flow projections based on NJDEP numbers. You know, they're defendable, they can't be disputed, they're, they're what's required, those numbers what were required for us to install a sewer in the first place. And so, looking at those numbers, you know, we can come up with an equivalent EDU and look at that scenario. You know, we're going to look at, you know, what that impact is and see if, because if we're going to look at the projections with the DEP, we also have to do a conservative projection with our residential. You can't be, you know, going actual residential at 120 gallons a day and not, and use those really conservative numbers with DEP. It's unfair also. So, we're either going to take those DEP projections and use the 200 gallons, and so it's, you're comparing apples and apples regarding what the equivalent EDU is. And so, we're basically, so from, from the school perspective, and we also have to look at what, what those numbers come out to be. Because from, from a school perspective, the, at 250 students, it would have been 12.5 EDUs is what the school should have been assessed based on those DEP flow projections. If it was an office, it would have been 17 EDUs. Now, you know, again, the point is, is that you have a very large building that is going to use, when it's occupied, uses a lot of flow. We cannot just build that building for 1 EDU and reserve that capacity. They should be paying for that, you know, reserve, that reserve capacity, the fact that they have the sewer, you know, the cost, again, comes from fixed costs regarding all the infrastructure. And it's the cost of that infrastructure that allowed them to discharge 1 gallon or, you know, 10,000 gallons into the sewer system. It's just getting that infrastructure is where the most of the cost has occurred. So, so I'm kind of, kind of done with my discussion. I just wanted to say that so that there isn't the expectation that we just had this report and then we, you know, now we're going to start new. You know, we are looking at the EDU. We also started to look at the comparison of just staying with the current ordinance and amending the 22,000, amending the 19.18, and amending that for the current things. We're starting to look at that, if that's, you know, more equitable. But again, that doesn't address all the issues that we raised with that.
I think basically what you're saying, we're moving towards a fair share.
We are. We're looking, we're looking at, and this proposal of doing an EDU analysis is not uncommon. It's done with a lot of municipalities in Sussex County, throughout the state. It is one of the many conventional ways of building the sewer system. And so, because really, when you're looking at the variability of flow, you know, going to a flat rate for the commercial just makes, even for an administrative point of view, that with issuing bills, it's a very easy task to push the button, issue a bill versus now we have to look at all the water records. It actually generates a more constant revenue because now you don't have the variability with the, with the commercials, so it's constant. And it's also, they're paying a fair share of, even though if they're not using all that gallonage that we allocated for them, they're paying for it. So, that's, that's nice.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question? Why wouldn't, I'm sorry.
Your answer, I fear. I have a quick question for Mr. Urson. I'm looking for a clarification. I don't know, but I'm not sure that that's a good answer to it. I'm the deed owner to my property, it's recorded in due. I assume that I own the property and I own the land for the servant, right?
Yeah, I think that the deed, as I say, meets about description.
So, then the follow-up is, today, on my property, this grinder pump, this property under the grinder pump, perhaps around it, certain diameter, who owns that?
Again, there's, there was a lot of different easements done in the town back then, I wasn't involved, but I've reviewed lots of them.
I have easement people.
Typically, you own the property.
Yeah.
And whatever easements or whatever rights are granted to the town are in the easement, which is typically going to be to access the property, to service the grinder pump, to come and go on to the property for those purposes.
Right.
But if you ask who owns it, you own it, but certain rights are reserved by the easement.
So, do those easements go away after June or after they replace the grinder pump for the first time?
No, because I think the...
No, the town will, will maintain the easements, they'll maintain all the mains and connections. The only thing that's being conveyed to the property owners to maintain is the grinder pump. They will just service those grinder pumps. The town, if there's a clog, you know, beyond, in the pipe beyond the grinder pump, the town will respond to that clog. But ultimately, it's just putting the responsibility on the property owner to maintain those pumps. Their pump.
But the whole purpose of the easement was to provide for access to that pump. So, why should the easement remain?
Yeah, again, the, you know, this may be a disagreement regarding, you know, what the intent was, but the general, you know, the fact that the town went in and spent probably 30, 40,000, probably even more in some locations to connect these grinder pumps, the governing body at the time did not want those individual property owners to incur that large cost. And so, basically, when we're talking about all this debt service that we're paying off, we're paying off the fact that when that, for the people that own grinder pumps, they had to install a 10-foot pipe. That was their only responsibility, is to install a 10-foot pipe to connect the house to the grinder pump. And all people with the, with gravity systems had to extend it from, from the road to their house and incurred even more expense than that. And so, it's a matter of, again, we're trying to, we're looking at the sewer bills, we're looking at this, and we're looking at what, how to come with the, a more equitable approach for everyone. And so, we looked at that, is that it is conventional for a homeowner to maintain a pump affiliated with their septic system.
I'm not questioning that, but the fact is, you're changing the ordinance so that the homeowner is now responsible for that grinder pump and the connections up to the road or to the sewer. So, why should the easement that town has still remain in effect?
Yeah, so the engineer is saying that the town would still maintain certain components, like what do you call the...
The housing.
The housing. So, if you gave up your easement, it would work against you. If you want to give up your easement, I think the town would take it back, but then you'd be responsible for the pipe in the house.
Well, maybe I'm misunderstanding the easement, but easement to me means that you, I've given you, or you've taken from me, access to my property for your purposes.
Correct, but the purposes are defined in the easement and the maintenance responsibilities are defined in the easement.
But maintenance responsibilities disappear because of the new ordinance?
Yeah, that's what you're missing. The maintenance responsibilities are going to disappear at some point with respect to the pump itself, but not with respect to the other infrastructure. You don't want to give up your easement because then you would be picking up more responsibility.
In addition to the pump.
In addition to the pump.
In addition to the pump.
Just a quick question to change, to something lighter. Is there any plans or any development plans for Lakeside Boulevard developing that to a home, town-style street where we get more gradables?
Yeah, the Borough Council has asked our engineer, at the request of the Land Use Board, to prepare a preliminary plan on extending the area in needed redevelopment from River Sticks down to 607 corridor for residential, for commercial and business properties specifically. And that's usually done by block and lot, the meats and bounds under Title 40 are pretty clear. And so, that would, that would mean that there are certain advantages that a person can use by state statute. If you are in a needed redevelopment, there are different resources available to you as an investor. It will help us, in my opinion, compete with other towns such as Newton, Hardeston, other towns that use incentives for investment to come towns that use incentives for investment to come in. And that's never a guarantee, but it's a plan and we should have a plan and we will have a plan. The engineer has started preliminary work on it and what happens there, we'll do an overlay, so there'll be a tax map and there'll be an overlay over that that shows the proposed area in need of redevelopment.
The other question I have is the, can we, for the next meeting, which will definitely sell sewers again, can we look at other towns and get their costs for the per capita, per person sewer connections, what the initial investment was, when the sewers were put in, what time period? Because I think that'll shed a lot of light on what we're seeing. A lot of these towns have had sewers, like Rocksperry has to have sewers 40 or 50 years. We're very good with this, so we're incurring those costs. We hear, I hear a lot of...
We're not incurring, we have incurred.
Yes.
And that's what we're stuck with.
And, yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
And what I'd like to see and show is that other towns have all these fees and they're paying them, and they might be reduced because of the radibles in Rocksperry, or the town has put them in so far in the past that they're done paying for the infrastructure, now they're paying for gallonage. And I think that's something that the council needs to bring out, so people understand a little bit better where that cost is coming from.
I can speak for, I can speak for this council and we are working very hard.